Talk about it.
Yeah, yeah, well, I have been on, I've been on, I wanna. Roland, Jesse? I'll be just like. Yeah, do you think I got some of our Mackenzie?
Yeah, like United Tan, alright.
Where you been, up north?
Yeah.
Not working on Sarah's letter.
I had to say hi to Lou Chris for Mackenzie.
It's a good video.
Yeah.
Before Jesse's interview, sir, I made sure he did not give out the words.
Yep. Um, and. So much for that, before that, so.
It's, uh, you do it at the end.
Was that?
You do it at the end.
Oh, we can do it at the end.
It's a little tricky.
It's a little tricky.
Oh. No, I don't, I just want to, yep.
Yep.
Alright, do those after. I've got five o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order today, Monday, April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Roll call, we have selectmen Eric Eaton, Mackenzie Jewett, Kevin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlow, town manager Jesse Dunbar, town clerk Sarah Abbott. Um, adoption, oh, no, Howdy has called out this evening.
Uh, make a motion to excuse Howdy Goodman from tonight's meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Howdy Goodman from tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Adoption of agenda, is there anything anyone would like to change? We do have to add in an executive session, um, titled Personnel Matters, and we can do that at the end. So we'll do it, what, nine, eight? How about that, Jesse?
Yep, just, yeah, add it, one more, yep.
Sure.
Do we have to make a motion on that? Jesse, do you want a motion on that, to add it, or?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, I make a motion to add executive session, uh, to the end of the meeting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to add an executive session titled Personnel Matters to the end of the meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Approval of warrants.
Minutes.
A minute, approval of minutes. Jesse's running off me here. We have the minutes from Monday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from Monday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Uh, abstain.
Eric abstains, he wasn't here. Okay, now warrants, Jesse. We have warrant ninety-nine for sixteen thousand, three hundred, twelve dollars, ninety-four cents. Warrant one hundred for thirty-three thousand, seven hundred, sixty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. Warrant one oh one for sixteen thousand, seven hundred, thirty-seven dollars, sixty-nine cents. Uh, warrant one oh two for one thousand, three hundred, sixty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. And warrant one oh three for one hundred, forty-four thousand, three hundred, sixty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents.
I make a motion to approve warrants ninety-nine through one oh three?
Second.
Uh, just make sure, haven't had a chance to go through the list yet.
Did you already?
Yep, which one is it?
I think it's one hundred.
Okay.
Do you want me to redo the motion?
Um.
Skip that one warrant, do that separately?
Yeah, it's one hundred.
It's one hundred, okay. Yeah, maybe if you would skip one hundred and then make a move on that.
Oh, okay, withdraw my motion. I make a motion to approve warrants ninety-nine, one oh one, one oh two, and one oh three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approves warrant ninety-nine, one oh one, one oh two, and one oh three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Make a motion to approve warrant one hundred?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrant one hundred. Um, is there any discussion? All those in favor? I abstain from that. Alright, now we're down to regular business. Um, first thing we have is an abandoned slash derelict vessel. We have Harbor Master, Tyler here to give us any updates on that, or do you want to start with that, Jesse?
Um, I'll just, I agree with the very pretty overview that's in your memo. Um, Tyler's been working, um, on getting the vessel, um, removed from the harbor since October, I believe. Um, the vessel could no longer be on the mooring, but it was on, it was on a commercial mooring. It no longer held a commercial, um, fisherman's permit. Um, the vessel hadn't been moved in forever. It was a danger in the harbor for the caliph growing off it, um, mooring. It was in, um, disrepair. We had to have, um, the mooring repaired. It was, the boat was banging into other boats. Um, so it's been a long process, um, that Tyler can point to any details, if you would like. Um, but essentially, uh, earlier this winter, um, he finally made contact after repeated attempts with the vessel owner, um, and the owner signed a document stating he would remove the vessel by March first. Or gave permission to the town to remove it and dispose of it on his behalf, if he did not. Um, so he did not, and mid-March, it was removed, um, and it's parked up here, as I'm sure you're all aware. Okay, Tyler's worked with, uh, attorney Collier throughout the process, um, and we're at the point now to decide, um, how you're going to dispose of it and try and recoup the town's, um, expenses. We've got expense of the mooring chain, um, expense of removing it, lawyers' fees throughout the process. You know, Tyler's got time into it that normally would have been spent by the Harbor Master. If you want to coop any of that. Um, and any applicable storage fees, we're sitting here, um, you can talk to the attorney about that. The attorney's fees, um, I did add up since I did the memo, uh, and it's right around fifteen hundred dollars, attorney's fees on top of the other expenses. Um, if you do decide to sell the vessel, anything above that would be turned over to the boat owner.
So fifteen hundred dollars is attorney fees, that's not counting having it hauled?
No, that.
Tyler's time and all of the other, oh, thanks, yeah.
What's the, uh, what's the amount for everything else?
Four hundred to get it hauled out, three hundred and fifty dollars from Seabirds Marine to service the mooring. Uh, we're putting that into one big lump sum as for the mooring and the vessel. So if we sell the vessel, it's gonna pay off all of that. My time, if we're gonna intrude, storage fees on top of this, uh, we'll look at that.
So.
So it'd be at least, not including Tyler's time, um, because we have to go back down and kind of figure that out, but the rest is twenty-two hundred and six.
That's what the attorney pays.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, we re- should, we should recoup a little bit of Tyler's time too, because I know all the time that he's spent in this, even if it's just a small amount, just, just something to help soften the blow just a little bit.
So I mean, Jesse went into, you know, the ground about it, but I mean, if you guys wanted more details, it's, it's been going on, I went over and beyond for Freddie. I like Freddie very much, um.
Ricky.
I'm sorry?
Ricky.
I'm sorry, Ricky, I have all of it. Ricky very much, it's been going on actually since September. Um, we have a paper trail of it, I've sent him certified mail. Uh, I've got pictures of his boat making contact with Justin's bragging, and that was the reason I contacted Seabird Marine to get that mooring done.
Yep.
Um, so where we're at with the vessel, the deciding factor this evening is, you know, whether we sell the vessel or not, I guess. Um, speaking to James Collier, our lawyer, he said we should do two things, one or two things, and I think we should do both. Uh, Ricky should receive a certified letter, you know, uh, whether it be hey, Ricky, in twenty days, this is your notice of your boat being sold. Uh, on top of that, we put it in the newspaper, like any other lost, abandoned, or stolen goods for thirty days, saying, you know, here's your goods, take ownership of it. In a perfect world, we hope it's a lot easier than us going and missing the best fuel at home with it.
And he signed something, giving the, if he didn't call it that the town was allowed to?
Yeah.
And he hasn't contacted the town since it was hauled out?
No.
No.
He actually stopped into my office with Brendan's Baughford, and, uh, he had told me, for whatever reason, he hasn't been around. I know that you're taking my mooring, that's perfectly fine. I listed the amount of reasons why I'm taking his mooring, there's actually three of them, and then told him, you know, what kind of time do you need to remove the vessel? Because at the end of the day, I don't want to do this. This is, you know. Yes, safety for the harbor is number one, and that is my responsibility, but at the end of the day, his vessel is his responsibility to get it back. Um, I said, what do you need for time? He said, Tyler, what does March first sound like to you? And this was, uh, before I went on my cruise, so I left February third. So before that, um, he said, yeah, March first, I, we agreed on it, and I said, well, Ricky, stand right there, I'm gonna fill out a, you know, agreement, and I'm gonna have you sign it right here. And, uh, I had him sign it right there, and, you know, I can print that agreement out for you guys to read in, you know, for made him, but it was somewhere along the lines of the vessel's not removed by March first, the town will take ownership of it, and you either dispose of it, or sell, or, uh, uh, you know, donate, whichever we do with it, you know, uh, for the town to recoup money. So, yeah, it would be the best of the answers. Any other questions?
Don't forget about documentation costs as well. That's one thing that we didn't figure in there. I know it's small, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, that is something, absolutely.
I think you've done everything you can, right? I mean, you can't beg somebody to.
I can only bend over to the rock for the fire.
Do the right thing, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable thing, just put it in the paper, um, send more mail. And just, this is the total that is owed to the town, and if he can't pay it, or doesn't want to pay it, or then we have no choice. It's just like if someone doesn't pay their property taxes eventually, like we.
Absolutely.
You hate to do it, but you're stuck in a spot where, I mean, you have to recoup some of it.
Yep.
And, uh, with a little bit of research me and Jesse have done, and my knowledge of, uh, quite a few vehicles have doing this with, with the town's ownership of the vessel and actually signing ownership over to the town. Just so everybody understands, it's kind of, uh, antique automobile for lack of better terms, you know? So it would just be, uh, a bill of sale to the town to the next owner, selling from the research that I have done.
I don't think you title any boats in there, do they?
No. Yeah, I mean, documentation gets a little bit more.
No, documentation, but it's, it's to that age where I don't take the doc, there is no numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a little bit more research to do on that, but I think we have.
On the transfer process.
Yeah.
Yep.
Did he sign for any of the certified letters?
No, man. He did tell me that he received it.
Did they come back?
No.
They didn't come back? All you can do, right?
I hate to deal with that boat at all. I was trying to think of, you know, the value of the mooring is close to what it would be to recoup the twenty-two hundred dollars. Uh, it's a little less, probably. I was wondering if that was an avenue that we could go down, just, it's already our mooring now, to just sell that to the next guy and get rid of this boat, don't deal with, give it to Ricky, let him deal with it, but then we would have another cost to get it to his house. But, uh, I don't know.
And then the mooring actually isn't ours yet. It will, and all ours, that's still Ricky's, you know, that's our spot, obviously, but as for the stone and tackle, that's.
Yeah, I thought you were taking that, okay, yeah.
No, so it's, what's most likely gonna happen with the mooring is it's just gonna go on the beach. Because, uh, uh, we can't, as a town, it's a, it's a, it's a little more hoops to jump through to take ownership of that stone and tackle. At, at this point, it's just, we own the spot, obviously. Put it on the beach like the rest of the moorings in Staples, and the next guy to have to assign that spot, buys the mooring, puts it in the spot, or not.
I understand what you're saying, Eric, it's, it's a hard spot to be in, but.
I know, he hasn't given any effort to keep it, which is ridiculous, in my opinion, but, um.
I mean, if there's anybody who wants to pay it off for him, pay off that, and then just truck it to his house, and then he's gotta come up, you know, have stands and blocks and everything to put it on, then, then that, that's great, but.
I would rather Ricky come get the boat before we haul it here, and I'd still rather him come get the boat at the end of the day.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, if it were my boat, I would be the one that would want to set the price on, you know, the sale of it.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Because we can sell it for five grand if we wanted to, and it doesn't matter.
We will most likely, but understand that that's something else to add there, Eric, is that we're paying off our bills, the rest of the money's going back to Ricky.
No, I get that, but I'm just saying that it should be a fair value for Ricky as well, if we do sell it, um, which is.
But it's a steal.
Ricky should have got the boat again.
Ricky should have figured this out a long time ago.
Right. Right. And it's hard to put a number on that boat, just sitting here.
It's hard to put a number on that boat, period.
Well, I mean, an appraiser could put a number on it, but that's another expense that we would have to pay, which I wouldn't want to pay.
Engine transmission's down, the wheelhouse's roared, it's on the trunk, so it's, it's a difficult thing to value.
You say the engine is shot?
Yeah.
So you're buying a hull?
They're buying a hull, but I, that means that there's quite a few people that have already reached out to the town about.
Yeah, it's a Stanley thirty-six, right?
Yeah, it'll sell easy enough, whatever the value we think it's worth.
Yeah, I don't think, I think that's just the risk that he takes at this point, is selling, you know, is probably not gonna go for what he wants it to sell for, but.
Yeah.
We're stuck in a situation where this is not one we want either. We don't want to have to deal with this.
If he was interested in selling it, though, he could have done that a long time ago, right?
Yeah, or a month ago, or two months ago, or three months ago, or any of this.
He's worked for Cody Seabird for a very long time, and he told me when he came to my office, he was gonna contact Cody to get the boat hauled out. I was fingers crossed and tickled pink after dealing with it for months, was hoping so, so. Where we're at, ladies and gentlemen?
Anybody have any questions?
So, just to clarify the process, basically, what I'm hearing, it makes sense to me, is to give him a price, say, this is what we got into it, you pay this, or it goes up for sale. I mean, I, I guess we're gonna make that decision, but that's what we're talking about.
Yes, so if you decide to do that, and we'll post that it's, we're accepting bids for it, and at that time, we'll send him a letter saying we are accepting bids until this date, this is the amount that you owe, if you would like to come forward, call that date, and pay that. Because it's ultimately up to you on that day, whether he's satisfied, if he could come to the meeting, I might move the check if he wants. It's because it's up to you to accept whatever you want to at that meeting.
It sounds like you got a lot of choice.
Yeah, and I mean, Tyler's definitely going above and beyond necessary, so, I mean, to make it work, so.
What do you think, Eric, as much as you?
I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah.
What, uh, so you're just gonna take bids like normal, with no baseline? Because then you could, we, we could end up selling it for a dollar and not getting any.
We don't have to accept the bid, though.
Right.
Right.
We have to accept the bid after.
Right.
So they all come in sealed, and then the, I'll open them at the time that is stated, um, for the witness, and write them down, and then give them to you, and then it's up to you, you can accept the lowest, the highest, or not, like.
Right, if we hit them all, it can go back out.
Right, yes, okay.
Should we decide on a minimum that we think, that we should put on it, or just let it, let it be?
That's what I mean by a minimum. I see what you're saying, like, should the town at least start off where we're breaking even?
Right, whatever the number is, but.
I don't think you need to, since you can say no, that area, so I don't think it's necessary, but.
But between now and then, you'll get a concrete number, like a, like we have an approximate number, or you haven't figured in, like, Tyler's time and storage and all of the other things that, that.
And to Eric's point, I understand what you mean, but you know how many boats I've seen and been through, and I can tell you that hull is not worth a whole ton now.
No, I'm not saying it is, but.
Thirty-six foot Stanley hull, it's, you're, you're not gonna fetch any big money for that, especially, I mean, to, for someone to have to, they could redo it themselves, you know, someone younger than it would give them a good start, you know, good starter boat, but it's not gonna be, uh, um, I don't think you're gonna see very high bids on it.
No, and we're not looking for again, but I can't stress it enough when I say this, we are not looking to make money off Ricky Higgins' vessel.
Right.
We're looking to get our money back from unfortunately having removed this derelict vessel. That's it. If there's any extra, it goes to me pretty Ricky.
So what if we set a minimum of whatever our break even point is, set our minimum of whatever Jesse tells us, but we can make a motion tonight as our, um, break even of just all the fees. Um, what do you think for Tyler's time? I know we'll have to figure that, a reasonable, a couple days labor into it. I mean, I know it's.
This, we'll just use the physical labor, the actual putting the Harbor Master boat hauling it in, that's it.
Yeah.
Anything else is just my job.
Yeah, okay. So just the, the few hours that he gets on.
About twenty-five hundred? I mean, you're, you're, you said twenty-two oh six?
Yeah.
Twenty-five hundred seems like a.
Yeah, twenty-five hundred minimum, and that covers everything, then, yeah.
Yeah, you can.
You can put that in the bid specifications or whatever?
Just to be sure, all of this, I know we have authority over it, but that way also people don't try to bid on it for, uh, you know, to waste their time or ours, they don't bid on it for.
Fifty-dollar bid, so.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah.
I make a motion to au- excuse me, authorize the sale of the abandoned vessel, Jackaline, by sealed bid after thirty days, with any funds received above the town's cost, with a minimum bid of twenty-five hundred. Be returned to Richard Higgins.
Second.
I don't know if that made sense.
Close enough.
Well, you go ahead.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the sale of an abandoned vessel, uh, Jackaline, be sealed bid after thirty days, with any funds received above, uh, what is owed to the town to be returned to Richard Higgins, and to set a minimum bid of twenty-five hundred dollars. Sounds.
Sounds better.
Sounds a little, yeah, I tried to think of how I, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, and thanks for dealing with all the stuff that you've had to do with this. You've done a good job, and, okay, it's not, not something that any of us are gonna do. Alright, next we have Harbor Master Shack. You have a new Harbor Master Shack, so you want to get rid of the old one?
Think about it, considering it.
Yeah.
Before we're approaching you, gentlemen, and ladies, about.
So, the plan has always been, since we started constructing the new one, to remove the old one, that was part of the reason for building the new one, hop out of the flood zone and out of the hazard, um, and several of the grants we received were because we are in the, so we do need to remove the building from the mooring. Um, since then, we've had some comments on, well, couldn't you use it for storage? Couldn't you leave it there and use it for storage? Um, we really don't want to leave it there for those reasons, and to free up, you know, space on the wharf. Um, so, but last week, the week before Tyler mentioned, you know, maybe we do want to keep it for storage, um, so there's certain things that don't have to be in the Harbor Master's, um, office. We've just been kind of operating on the plan of disposing of it, um, so so to bring it, you had officially made your decision on what to do with it, or how you wanted to dispose of it, so um, put it on the agenda for your discussion, if you want to relocate it down there somewhere to continue using it for the harbor, or relocate it somewhere else, if you want to relocate it somewhere else, um, or put it up for sale. By several of us, or move it entirely.
Any ideas with where you were thinking to put it?
Yeah, um, the first parking lot there that was just redone by, um, it's done by, uh, where I, I have floats there right now, I don't know if you've been down.
Yep.
Uh, somewhere right there, to keep it out of the way, keep parking open for, still that's standard parking, so keep parking open, but you know, just a place where I can put the heavy daily usage kind of stuff, you know, not even daily, but my tar paper kind of stuff, those heavy kind of items, you know, to keep the new office cleaned up, but I obviously have, you know, access to use the wharf garage, but it's kind of a, I don't know, something that I'm considering, because if you guys agree with, there's a shortage. We get rid of it, we're not getting another one, we're not bringing one back. So it's something to consider for sure. Uh, as of coming off the wharf, absolutely.
Now, the wharf garage down there, the one at the dock, to be clear, that one is yours to use in the winter, but it's then rented in the summer still.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I was just thinking, what about, uh, that's probably not enough room, but back in an inside there somewhere, like to keep your tools and stuff, so in the winter, you could feed out of that and work into the, in that building.
I also thought of that too, Jamie, so, uh, if you're looking right at the wharf garage to the left, the opposite side of the freezer.
Yep.
There's like that lean to that is kind of.
Yeah, mm-hmm, I was trying to think of one side it was, yeah.
Yeah, uh, eighty-six and that out of there, and, you know, it would be, it would be a wiggle to get it in there, but it will go in there one hundred and ten percent. That would be completely out of the way.
Yeah.
So that's something to consider.
Both, both sides, try to come off.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
But the water side is more of a.
A drop off.
Draw.
So, um, you know, I guess the conversation to be had is, is, you know, what are you guys' opinion on keeping or selling, what do you want to do for that, as for where we're gonna put it?
Doesn't need much maintenance now? I mean, does it need much work? Is it in pretty good shape?
No, it's in good shape.
It's got some life left.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I don't have buckets all over the floor catching water, it's in good shape.
I just, I'm sure I'm right. I know it's shankled.
Yeah, no, it's.
Yeah, it's more capable to store, you know, even the paperwork, uh, old charts and things that we have, so.
Might need the door replaced.
Yeah, 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 I told you, spray foam, sure.
Yeah, and you're not gonna get anything for it if you try to sell it, and so it's not, if you can use it, then.
And to be honest with you, Justin Seabird wants it real bad, he's probably been with it, so we really need to keep it.
He wants to put it next to his pond.
He does, pond hangout.
Big ice fishing shack.
Ice fishing.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's your timeline of, uh, getting into the new shack?
Um, really, we're, we're at the mercy of Versa Power, you know, uh, that's where we're at. Once the power's hooked up, I've had HD read in there last week, and they're just going real slow at it. Not super concerned about the, uh, the plumbing aspect side of things right now. Once the power's hooked up, I can call and get the cameras, the internet in there, and hopefully fast connectivity works this kind of fast, it's not really their four K, but, uh, get it moving at least, we're in there. So I'm really hoping by the end of this month, that being said, I want you guys all hearing when I say this, every float that we have system is gonna be in the water the end of this month, one hundred percent, so. It's gonna be kind of a balance and act on finishing that and putting floats in, but those are my hopes.
You should be closing in on it, and he helps, if it solves.
Does anybody get over there and look inside?
I, I haven't been inside.
Yeah.
Cut out very nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, stick it next to the garage.
Yeah, do whatever you want with it, I guess.
Especially there, that would tuck it right out of the way, and you'd never even know it was there, so.
Yeah, I, I think that'd make more sense than the parking lot, if you could get it in there.
Right, yeah, I agree, a lot of it, but we're all pretty much in agreeance that keeping it's not a bad idea.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to authorize the former Harbor Master Shack be retained and used for storage and locate it next to the wharf garage or? Oh, wait, sorry, you have a question?
Yeah, okay, just as soon as you finish your motion.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Two second, I get it, okay. Yeah, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the former Harbor Master Shack be retained and to be. Used for storage and located beside the town owned garage near town duck. Is there any discussion?
So we gotta uh, oh, go ahead.
Oh, yeah.
We just gotta get regular town permit, put it there, right?
Yeah.
Can we move it ourselves?
Yeah, no, we need to roll back.
No, you don't either, just tow it up there with a, it's got skids underneath, so then what are you gonna do with the back house?
You hook onto that thing that's been there since dawn of time.
No problem, you call me, you call me, I'll come down, grab the machine and it's not a problem. I just volunteered to do it.
He just gone.
Dean has a question.
What's, maybe there's not a plan, but what's the plan with the outhouse? And with the cameras, relocation of the cameras and stuff, what do you guys, once that's moved, what do you guys plan on doing?
There is a plan, so there's a plan with all of that, so the outhouses are gonna be basically that same surround that they have now, Dean. When you drive into the harbor with a vehicle, all you'll see is those cedar shingles that surround there, there'll be two outhouses. If you drove in from the harbor in a boat, obviously, you would see the doors to the outhouse, they would be pushed all the way against that railing that they're at now. As for cameras, basically, there is three cameras on the house now currently. I have one light pole that the camera looking straight across the harbor and to the lobster cars will remain at that view. And then the other two will be moved onto the new office, one facing the parking lot and the wharf garage and trash, most importantly. And then the other one up harbor towards, you know, our transit floats and towards Chris Goodwin's and Sway's Island, John's Island area.
So if we're gonna have anything monitoring the actual dock itself, because I mean the one with the camera up on the new Harbor Master building or whatever, I mean that's gonna be so much farther away. Than where it is now at that, you know, that you may not get good visibility as to who somebody is or something like that. So I don't know if you guys think with something closer, kind of like.
And I think that's something that we need to look at as we start, you know, moving our camera system and we get connect connectivity works to come down. You know, what the coverage is, because you're a hundred percent right on that, Dean, is, you know, being close enough to where we can, you know, see who and what something is going on. So definitely, that's something we're gonna approach as the time comes to move the cameras.
Yep.
Or, yeah.
We just, um, Tyler and I just spoke about that last week, um, discussing how many were there, how many are on the building and whether or not. We might need to add one somewhere to cover a closer view that's gonna be relocated.
We're hoping not to add one, just because of the price of them.
Yeah.
But if we need to.
Yeah, you could like around that light pole in that area, somewhere's there have a just a four by four post with the with a camera up there, so you could get a better view of, you know, right up in close.
Absolutely.
Or over by the border bodies.
Absolutely, possibly, that light post that I actually reinstalled last year that had been falling down, um, for two years past, the one that faces the outhouses.
Yeah.
Um, that camera used to be spun around one hundred and eighty and facing the wharf down to the wharf.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And then the other two cameras that we moved back to the new office have plenty of broad scope on the upper and parking lot and so on and so forth, so.
Yeah.
It's something we're definitely thinking about, and once we start really building up the infrastructure of the new office, we're gonna.
Are those cameras, are they all wireless?
No, they're all wired.
They are wired?
Yes, they're underground, yeah.
I didn't want to make sure you didn't have to walk across the dock for the water flow to.
So they got, we got, I have a few game cameras we can strap to some things around that.
Yeah, don't worry, we're not gonna, they're not gonna make you hike across the parking lot and build the border bodies.
No, sir, no, sir. I'll give you a prep, special privilege key for bathroom.
You will?
Yeah, we'll talk about that. Any more questions for me, ladies and gentlemen?
You're good, you can go home.
Awesome, I'm Paulie Clifton, thank you so much for hearing me out, I hope everyone has a good evening.
See you later.
See you.
Thanks, see ya.
Thanks, sir.
All right, no more questions. All those in favor? All right, next we have uh Seal Cove Pond LY management plan.
All right, so, um, as you're all aware, um, over the last several years, there's been a lot of work, um, that's gone into the restoration of this Fishway in Seal Cove. Including an extensive project to reconstruct it, um, DMR has been stocking the pond in spring for the last forty years, um, spring of twenty-four was their last stocking. Hoping to reestablish the elons there, and so over the year, last several years, between Mayco Heritage Trust and numerous volunteers. Doing fish counts and checking the dam, um, we've kind of come up with this management plan, basically, as I said in my memo. Almost like just a working, living document to kind of go over the yearly steps, the goals of the fishway. We've discovered throughout the last couple of years working on it, lots of things, um, people have come forward with helpful tips, some non-helpful tips. But with information that wasn't, you know, well kept together, um, that would have been helpful to know, you know, throughout the process. So working with, um, Mayco Heritage and Sustainability Committee volunteers, um, and you can see at the end of the plan, we've. Been working with DMR, England Fisheries Wildlife, um, the National Park Service, um, so lots of different, um, the Somes, my now, um, in. Somerville, they do the fish lab there, lots of, um, experts in the field getting advice on it and, um, and coming up with this. Plan, um, just to make sure, you know, going forward, it's more clear and managed, kind of what the. Point of it is, what the goals are, um, what steps need to be taken every year, um, in regards to it. Also, part of the discussion in there, um, the Beaver Dam, uh, the town has given a permit. Every spring to notch the dam, um, we're not allowed to remove it as everybody would like, um. So we have to maintain a notch in it to allow the fish to pass through it, um, this summer, some volunteers who didn't quite understand. The whole process, um, cleared out a very large section of it, um, so the Beaver, uh, did not refill that, but. Decided for the rest of the summer to nightly power dam, um, which we had some dedicated volunteers, um, Sarah Lee, one of them, every day. To unpack the dam, um, Public Works and I took turns as well as and the Harbor Master, um, so it was a full-time process.
The Beavers, they're kind of spiteful, aren't they?
They're ambitious.
They've done a good job, um, so the discussion last, um, summer, um, came up about a Beaver Deceiver device, um, Blue Hill. Recently, or last season built one, and essentially allows the fish or the water to go through the Beaver, doesn't block it the way it's built. I can't explain the details, but there's plans, um, so it's in here recommended that we do that, um, to prevent all the hours of. Time figuring it out, um, we did get an estimate for that from, um, an expert that does them, um, these Blue Hills. Uh, and we did apply for a grant, um, which I just received, an email this afternoon that we did receive the eight hundred and twenty-five dollar grant towards that if we. If you want to go forward, um, we would be using, um. Fishway reserve to pay our share, but to upset that thousand dollars to the fishway reserve, so, any questions?
Eric, I say we go up and just tear the whole thing out. Save the whole works problem.
I mean, I don't know if you guys have ever had Beaver jerky, but it's pretty good.
Landowners around Seal Cove Pond, that would be unhappy.
Yeah.
Oh, the Beaver jerky thing does sound interesting.
What else we can do, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Put the tube in there. I motion to accept the Seal Cove Pond LY management plan as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the Seal Cove Pond LY management plan as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I motion to authorize using the Fishway Reserve to fund the construction of the Beaver Deceiver.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize using the Fishway Reserve to find, to fund the construction of a Beaver Deceiver. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, now we have the town manager's report.
All right, well, in the last couple of weeks, uh, I attended the League of Towns meeting, did the Harbor City Financial Reports. Attended meeting prep work on, um, harbor reporting and faculty my monthly check in with the protocol for the officer. Office staff, clerk was busy with DMV reports, she attended the MDI High School annual budget meeting, worked on lean discharges, annual report work. Uh, license plate organization, the state has started shipping us the new dating passenger plate. Uh, sent the ballot off to the printer for town meeting, um, she attended the basic budget workshop and worked on town meeting prep. And all of the deputy clerks attended the new license plate training with the state department. Public Works took care of trees on the gate road, received and processed sand delivery, uh, installed some signage. Prepared a driveway entrance, treatment road, uh, picked up some mailboxes that were, um, knocked over by a vehicle accident on treatment road on the sidewalk. Picked up trash at Hill Rash Cemetery and started sweeping the parking lot here. Harbor Master worked on trash and trap removal, office work, um, on the new office. Mooring bill processing, the mooring bills were sent out and processed when things coming in, um, that was the plumber on the new Harbor Master building. The boat ramp floats were switched out, uh, took the boat, uh, for executive service at Lake in Sea and worked on the ferry terminal floats. And over the next few weeks, I have a, um, grant kickoff meeting this week with FEMA, preparing the brick grants. Which were the grants we received for the wharf and three roads in town for project sculpting, um. NEMA is handling those and scheduled the grand kickoff meeting for this Thursday. I did just receive an email this afternoon that. Most of all of those have been canceled by FEMA, um, by the Federal Department, so I'll find out Thursday, there's still some confusion on. If they were awarded and if they're still in effect or not, um, so I'll know more after Thursday. And then I have a, um, inspection with the Department of the Interior on two grants that the town received in nineteen eighty-six and nineteen eighty-nine. That the Department of the Interior is periodically following up on to make sure that they were used as included, so I have that inspection.
Nineteen eighty-six? You know about that, don't you, Jesse?
So, there's that.
Okay, that's her old school then.
Yeah, I know.
Yep.
Well, I know Eric wasn't going on.
That means I don't have to vote on it.
Yeah, that's right.
Abstaining.
All right, suggestions for the next meeting? Date of the next.
Yeah, should we discuss the legislature starting to think about authorizing deer hunting on the island, should we talk about that at a meeting?
Well, I was gonna say something about that, but I didn't know how. Is that?
I asked Jesse about that two months ago.
No, but hang, hang on, did you look at your email? No, I don't check that, okay. Well, I just didn't know if it was, is that public information at this time? It is, because it's their email.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, it is, it is, I just want to be sure, there has been a, um, yeah. There's a representative that is, um, trying to push a bill to open up fishing, deer hunting on the island. And it's not our local representative from the island.
It's a representative that's not on the island.
Yeah.
Um, I know we can't talk too much about it, you know, but I'm suggesting it for a future item possibly.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, I can move.
Okay, we'll add it on for next meeting. Um, all right, date of the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to confirm the date of the next meeting for Tuesday, April twenty-second at five PM at town office.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting for Tuesday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, five PM at the town office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, now we have an executive session titled Personnel Matters.
I make a motion to request the town manager for the select board to find. Okay, to find the public discussion of these personnel matters could be reasonably expected to cause damage to the employee's reputation. And or to violate the employee's right to privacy and therefore go into executive session to discuss. The employment, appointment, assignment, duty, promotion, demotion, compensation, evaluation, disciplining, resignation and or dismissal. Of an individual, a group of public officials, appointees or employees as permitted by one MRSA four oh five dot six dot eight.
Sorry, it's moved, been moved and seconded to go into executive session entitled Personnel Matters as written by Kevin. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Question?
Well, last week, Trenton, Trenton bought because my wife was online, I'm taking something about hybrid, coming up online.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So, so, um, I'll make, she's like, I won't say anything about it, but do you have that LD number right now?
Yeah, yeah, I just want to be sure that that was, um, I wasn't sure how it was sent to us, I just raised real quick.
Oh, well, until you put it forward, then it's public information.
Yeah, um.
You want, I can look at it and send it if you want.
I'll get it for me tomorrow, then I can ask you the question I asked.
Yeah.
All right.
You want the LD number?
No, I'll get it for you tomorrow.
All right.
Have a good night.
Yeah. All right, we are out of executive session at five fifty-eight. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yep. Hey, get a book, question for it forward.
Yep.
Have you worked?
Oh, man.
Yes.
Do you like it?
I love it, but I'll tell you what, you want to wear rubber gloves when you cut it.
Really?
I, it is, we call it firework.